Alright, so we'll go ahead and start Policy Committee at six oh one. I'm here on time today. So, uh, for today, the first items, the generosity request protocol. Um, and I do believe that needs to come from District Administration of Policy Committee. So, um, whatever gets put together by District Office, I would think, um, or by District Administration, I would think that would then be, uh, brought to the Board for, um, critiquing and would go from there.
So this Jen, you want Lisa to, didn't Lisa draft this?
This is Lisa's.
Yeah, so you wanna just take me to the full Board, right?
Yeah, because the, the Policy Committee can't direct what staff can and can't do.
Right.
Um, if it were procedures, that would be different, but it's a protocol.
Yeah, there's really no procedures to the policy. I mean, ISBA didn't even have procedures to the policy, so.
Correct, correct.
Obviously, their, uh, legal team didn't think it was appropriate or necessary. I don't know.
Right.
Um, so can I just have her look at it then if she's good with, doesn't wanna make any changes and we're adding it to the May or meeting?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, 'cause when we were in the meeting, we actually found what was there, um, that everyone's been using.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So that would've been good to have kind of had it at that meeting, but we can just bring it to this meeting and.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, so, um, we have stakeholder input on the school meal charges. Alternative meals they have maxed out their charges. Kids should not go hungry. Agreed. Um, looks fine to me. I like the charitable assistance option. That's important.
Oh, I didn't think about that. They don't have it.
Sounds rational, reasonable, and on board with charitable donations. Should parents be reported for not reporting substance for their children as a minimum threshold?
Just so I can see, because I don't have a blocker on my screen.
No. I, I don't know that.
Which one?
Number six.
I'll move.
My board is not important.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I don't know that that's.
That doesn't happen.
I, I don't know that that's.
Yours doesn't have a blocker.
Um.
So I can see your screen on the video.
I think there should be a way for families to opt their children out of being able to charge meals, period. Okay, we send our children with plenty of food, and there have been a couple of times where the dangled carrot is being able to grab food and our parents should get the item. For a friend has been too much for a seven-year-old to handle. We don't want a food account or want our child that has food sensitivities to be allowed to take food for any reason. If our child was still hungry or had lunch stolen, we would rather the school contact us with what they sent. Um, okay.
I feel it kind of counts though. They don't have to do it. They don't have to sign up with an account.
I'm gonna open the draft. So yeah, this is just talking about, um. I mean, we're not setting the policy around how we're going to.
A lot of.
Sorry, I'm late.
Oh, you're good.
Stuck in construction. It's been a story for a while, with that? It's been a story for a while, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and you don't have to sign up to do it, so, um.
Right. Notes should be sent home with kids about low balances. Is that, that?
No notes.
Okay. Um, I'd like to see every child have breakfast, lunch. I would like to have a fund established so other parents could donate to, so no child goes hungry. Please do. Has that one been followed up with?
Where is that spreadsheet at, Roxanna, that you're looking at?
It should be on the. You go to the.
People could just donate.
The monthly. Yep, you're right. It's right, stakeholder input, right there.
Right.
So several times this year probably.
Right, but I mean, it's not in the policy directory.
It's not the drive?
There are some places where patrons will donate money to pay off accounts.
But is there like just a set fund or do they choose or do they just say, I wanna donate fifty, eighty, just?
A lot of times they just choose or it'll be, it could be a, uh, somewhat, uh, safer term.
Okay. Yeah, the stakeholder input isn't in that folder.
Five hundred dollars applied towards the balances, so sometimes that.
Yes. Okay. At a glance, okay.
Do you want me to put it in the right folder?
Oops, nope. Um, should.
I'm, I'm doing it right now. I'm.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. I love creating.
I was just asking Kevin about the charitable. He said we already do that.
Yes, yes. Okay.
He said several times this year, people will just say, I'm negative and they can.
We've had parade of patrons that will say, hey, we'd like to pay off five hundred dollars of John Brown's accounts from Mountain Dew.
Okay.
So.
I love creating an account for charitable, periodically individual requests to an unsecured account. It's a hundred dollars toward the kid's account because mom's having a hard time. I'm just checking the wording of the policy. It allows this to be specifically applied or if it can only be donated to the whole fund. I believe we will find charitable donors may have some hesitancy to give to the fund as we have the repeat offenders or those who abuse the charity.
Updated.
As any charitable organization.
Why are there two versions?
So having the ability to specifically designate your donation to go to a family student would be an important clarification. Okay, so let's go to the policy again. Thank you. District adopts the following policy to ensure district employees, family students have shared understanding of expectations regarding meal charges. The policy seeks to allow students. Kevin, a student, um, if a student no more than three meals to his or her student's recharge breakfast and lunches up to the maximum amount, charging of, of any of, oh, charging of all-accord or extra items to a student's account will not be permitted. We're just walking through all the comments of.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Students have charged maximum amount of income, we'll provide an alternative, an alternate meal. So the district will make reasonable efforts to notify students. Um, just to, okay.
Uh, number thirty-three. I feel like in every encounter I've ever had or ever witnessed, I feel like the team does a really good job to make sure that students aren't called out. It's not an embarrassing, I mean, they, they do a really good job to make sure that doesn't happen.
Oh, Lord. Okey-dokey. I'm just trying to find where, where it's not clear on the policy.
About the charitable part?
Yeah.
Maybe we just don't talk about it.
Okay, the district may establish an unpaid meal charges account to cover the cost. We don't talk about donation. Okay, donation, there we go. Alright, so would the district actually establish the unpaid meals account or is it specific to each building?
It can be specific too, 'cause sometimes we'll have a parent or just somebody from the community say, I'd like to help out in a school, such and such school, so sometimes they'll ask for a specific.
Okay, but I guess what I'm trying to understand is, does the district have an unpaid meals charge account? No.
There isn't like a, what's done in sales currently, if somebody calls in and I want to, they just donate right then and there.
They give us the money, then we apply it to.
Then they just donate it, yeah. It's a pretty straight front, so it never says.
Okay. Alright, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, should instead it say the district, should it say school buildings may establish?
Yeah. But it's pretty school-specific, right, when they do it?
Most of the time, in every one, whoever we choose to.
They say just please donate to the school?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so.
And then sometimes they want a specific school.
I literally find I know.
How do we comment?
Account. Do we have this account? This is gonna make sense, um.
Have we met before? I'm made.
Looking so distracted.
I'm jumping.
You have a very. I'm not good with introductions.
That's okay.
Um, so if maybe we change. What's that?
That could be somebody's job.
There we go.
Introduce her.
So, um, under charitable system, assistance, if we said school buildings may establish an unpaid meals charge account to cover the cost of unpaid meals, charitable groups, individuals, school fundraiserers and others may donate to this account, uh, blanked, blanketly or to an individual, I mean. Get the. Okay, what word am I looking for?
I don't know.
It's just like a group account.
Yeah.
To. Data.
There you go. Four. Two. This is. So may donate to this account's whole balance or to an individual account balance.
Can we do at the end of the school year, um, we roll over all positive balances? We just can't roll over negative balances.
Why can't you roll over the negative balances?
It's a state, I don't know. State requirement that at the end of the year. So I always, I had to give Brian, print a report out for the negative balances and then the district had to transfer that back to Food Service because they can't carry bad debt from year to year.
So are we tracking it somewhere then? Because the NS FSA, um, specifically has portions, I'm reading right now, that's why I asked, about bad debt and how it's supposed to be handled and it can be, let me go back to see where it is. Yeah, collection efforts may continue into the new school year as a delinquent debt. Um, this allows SFA's work with families to establish a longer repayment. So do we keep that somewhere? Um, and this is directly from the government, from the Food and Nutrition Services. Um, they're very specific on what can and cannot be done when it comes to school lunch programs.
Right, so at the end of the school year, it's just been a common practice to run that report
Mm-hmm.
and then the district transfer. And we've been able to keep the, keep that pretty low, um, overall, but that's typically how we've handled it.
Okay.
So do we carry, do we have some kind of ledger or something where we go back to those families the following year and say, hey, we still have outstanding? So we're writing off the debt then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and we're not rolling it over?
But it's been minimal, like I think Brian said, one year at most, it was like maybe a thousand, it wasn't.
Right, and then some overall, but a pretty low number compared.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. I just wanna make sure that we're within their guidelines, because I guess you can do it either way, either it's written off this.
Yes.
Well, I heard other districts today, we were at the superintendent's meeting and they were talking about, I mean, thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
Our parents do a really good job of staying on top of it, and Kevin's team does as well.
Okay.
And that's where some of that follow-up to happens with uh, low balance reports being sent home to the families and things like that.
Okay, yeah. How do we decide, say I come and I wanna give, like you gave an example earlier, five hundred dollars to John Brown's lunch. How do we decide whose account it gets applied to? Say there's, there's, say there's, you know, I don't know, five hundred and seventy-five dollars worth of collective debt. How do we decide which account is being paid?
We just try to, I guess best judgment, go in and apply it to, I guess, the biggest bang for our buck as we can to try to eliminate as much and zero out as many kids as possible. And sometimes that may not occur, but usually we're able to get them.
Yeah, but that's what I mean, how do we decide, how, what is the criteria for deciding whose account it's applied to?
They're really, yeah.
It's just whatever.
We, so what we're able to do is we can run a report per school and we can look at each student's balance. And sometimes it may mean too that we, maybe we don't reduce it all, but we try to reduce as much as we can.
So I guess, so we write it to the whole? Is that what you try to do across all, multiple students, just the whole?
Correct, right.
So if you have fifteen students, you apply as much as you can to those fifteen to get the balance even?
Correct, yeah. And we wanna try to zero out as many kids as possible because it makes it, you know, easier going forward, but then we do have some students that will, will pay that off and then charges will be occurred, and so it doesn't mean it's gonna eliminate it for the rest of the year, but.
Yeah, I'm not, what I'm thinking about is that, is that how do we blindly apply in, you know, um, whether it's like Lynn says, you know, you take the whole fifteen kids, everybody gets a hundred bucks or fifty bucks or whatever.
Right. Right.
Or like you're saying, we're trying to zero out as many, so, you know, the first five are zero, but, you know, this poor kid here has got a hundred bucks left on his account. That's what I'm trying to understand is if there's actually a procedure that says we just take the oldest, uh, oldest negative account, negative on there and, and apply the funds there and then work from the oldest to the most recent or?
Yeah, and we, right.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying, do we have?
Is that typically what you do, is the oldest of the, and just?
Well, I mean, we'd have to look at one of the reports again, 'cause typically it just pulls up the student degree and then it shows the deficit, so. I'd have to see if there's a way to find out if it shows what.
Yeah. I'm just curious. I'm just trying to think, you know, like if a parent came and like, oh, you know, you wiped out Sally Sue and Johnny's lunch bill and my kid still got, you know, why didn't they get their twenty bucks paid or?
I mean, in some cases it does, whatever is donated, uh, sometimes we can wipe out everything.
Wipe out everything, yeah.
And that's the best, best case.
And then do you get a lot of donations where it's, and I just wanna add this mail, this one family?
Um, now more, more just specific school versus.
Or is it?
Okay.
Do we get a lot of donations?
Do we need more?
We've had more this year than we've had in, in Eric, remember?
Do we not have any?
Is there a published way that parents go or patrons go and make donations?
I don't think so.
Basically federally controlled.
Or do they just call you?
Program, I mean, I can look at some, but I don't think so.
They'll just call you.
Call the school and fail them with me?
So I guess my other question then would be, under the charitable assistance, so I kinda reworded some of it. Parents and guardians of children who pay the full amount of theirs for school meals and who have funds left over in their school meals account at the end of the school year may donate these excess funds to the unpaid meals charge account or may carry, may carry their excess funds over to the next school year, 'cause that's what you said, okay.
Correct.
Um, I didn't like this maybe offered, the option of, it's like, no.
And I don't think that's ever.
And, but then we follow that up with the superintendent will establish procedures for use of such funds. Well, they can't, the superintendent can't take someone's money and do something with it?
Yeah, we don't, we don't do any of that.
So we should set what that looks like right now, is what you're saying, put it in the policy? Well, we should strike through it.
But I mean, we should decide the procedure for the use of such funds?
Well, no, it's their money, so they either can take it back or they can donate it to the oldest.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Those are the only two options.
You were talking about the excess, like the donations?
Oh, right, right.
So this is like at the end of the year, if you, you know, say you deposit five hundred dollars on your child's account and have a hundred dollars left, that hundred dollars just rolls over to the next school year.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, 'cause it seemed, I mean, I didn't get very far, but it appeared that people were a little, excuse me, um, confused about how they could donate, where they could donate.
Right.
You know, and so to cleaning it up with, instead of the district, we're gonna make it specific to school buildings, they'll do the unpaid funds balance and they can donate to the balance as a whole or to individual kids. And then if you have money at the end of the year, then you either get it back or if you wanna donate it, you can. I mean, it's pretty cleaner, I mean, pretty concise.
Twenty twenty-three.
And then, um. I'm a little, uh, perturbed by thirty-three.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, so we only have thirty-three responses. I love it. Okay. I understand why it looks like there's one, a response that's not being seen. It's weird. Okay, so. Can we add an offered meal for children after the meal charges? Well. So. So I'm just curious, why do we not allow charging of all-accord items or extra items to a student account?
Uh, because that's typically, we just haven't made that a practice, just because we didn't allow snack items, all-accord items to be charged. It was basically just the reimbursable meals.
I think, I mean, I imagine it's because they don't want some kid who's like, I'm hungry, but I only want cookies or something like that.
Yeah, it, yeah, it could be that for sure, but we've tried to just keep the charges to the reimbursable lunch, which includes a salad bar and milk versus the all-accord items.
Okay. Okay. So does anybody have any other, um?
There was, the one question that in this, and currently, uh, kids are not going without, so we do provide an alternate meal. Cheese sandwich, tripped in a salad bar and milk if kids do not, um, if they've exceeded their three charges.
Okay.
And that's, and that line is still in in here, so I was just curious on that.
Okay, so.
Which, which line, what are you curious?
So it's on the first page, there's under the second paragraph, under unpaid meals charges.
Yeah.
Students who have charged the maximum amount cannot pay out of pocket from it will not be provided an alternate meal.
So are they provided an alternate meal?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. So we just will be provided an alternate meal, okay.
Great.
Perfect. Yeah, we'll just take the "not" out.
That was easy.
Yeah, some people were a little like, come on, feed the kids, you know what, so. Um, alright. I have the charitable funds increased to support our students. See, this really looks like there's something written there that's, that'll like this. Okay, so does anybody have any other comments about the comments or questions about the policy that we might need to? Look at. Nope.
I don't know, I'm still going through it.
Okay.
I think there's, it's been a while. They're still referencing these two thousand seventeen, uh, stuff, and I don't know if there's any newer stuff there. Roxanna just showed me a new memo that came out last month, March third. Um, so I don't even know if these are the most up to date or not.
From ISBA?
Uh, no, the, uh, unpaid meal charges, the guidances, the legal references and other references at the bottom of the policy.
Okay.
Um, but I don't know what's on, uh, what ISBA has on the bottom of there, so we'll. Can I, um, listen there? But I mean, you guys can keep moving ahead though.
ISBA's was last updated seven seventeen.
Oh.
So, um, yeah, which.
So I haven't updated that by then.
Which our policy is ten seventeen when it was adopted. Um, what I am curious about is, okay, let's see, uh, eight two forty-five. Yeah, and there's no updates, um, on the, uh, policies on the memos. So I suppose, um. Since I don't have anything better to do than write these policies. Well, that's all we do do, yeah. I don't know what's on, I don't know what is its number.
Two oh one six.
Uh, no, the, um, the reference, the legal reference for the federal program.
Okay, and it looks like SB forty-six two oh six, two oh one six hasn't been updated since twenty sixteen.
Yeah, well, the two oh one six is the twenty sixteen, is the way it needed to be.
Oh, okay.
See if there's a, a newer one on there. Here we go, that is. Special milk. Yeah, we're just gonna do something with the, you know, sugar regulation. There's a whole, um, organization out there, um, because right now the, um, Food and Drug and maybe these guys too, Food and Nutrition, Larry's doing it, um, they're open for a commenting period um, to try and make them regulate the nutrition factors in schools a little bit better. And number one, starting with the sugar content.
We have sugar and sodium, there's a couple of things.
Yeah.
And the sodium one's gonna be interesting, 'cause the, where the target is in twenty twenty-nine is, is quite a bit lower and it's, I mean, it's difficult to meet.
Right.
Um, so depending on how things play out, um, I think it's two thousand twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, there's gonna be like a ten percent reduction per year from this, every other year.
Right. But I think from what I was reading, I mean, and I could be off, 'cause I, it's not like this is my, you know, child nutrition thing, but, um, they were, the, um, the one organization, I guess they were concerned because there are no regulations on the amount of sugar?
Well, there are calories.
Right, but not sugar content, added sugar or sugar content. They were saying that there's no, um.
Yeah, everything gets us more tied into the calories.
Yeah. Okay, well, um. I don't know where they would be hiding those other resources, and he says resources, but there's no links to himself. Oh, here we go, two thousand seventeen, seventeen, and sixteen. And that was from the eighteen, two thousand eighteen publication. You can move on to the next one and I'll keep looking for those references, okay?
So pending whatever. Okay, so pending whatever we're modified, I'd say we're good to go, um, to the board with that one.
Eighty-two forty-five.
Correct. Okay, so if you wanna go?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good to meet you gentlemen.
You're welcome. Thanks, nice to meet you guys.
Um, what was the deal with school support organizations? Okay, we started that one, um, cause we had just like fifteen, twenty minutes left.
So the one, oh.
No, I'm just, I mean.
Um, you had a question about the district requires any
Wait, wait, wait.
booster organization, so I reached out and sent an email, um.
Do you wanna plug in?
Yes, is there a plug over there?
There is a plug over here.
Oh, is it handy though?
Yeah, it's like the, the stick thing.
Oh, okay.
What are they called? You know, the things.
They're cute.
How do you educate it?
Power shirts, there we go.
So, uh, what did we find out about, uh, booster organizations being carried on, uh, armor?
Okay, I just, uh, so this, I had Lisa reach out, um, to, um, our, the Morton Company, which is our, part of our insurance, and so she said, does a parent teacher, PTO, or high school booster club have to have its own liability insurance, or are they covered under the district's insurance? When we run events, these organizations help with planning and implementing, but they are school events, however, the fund raised at, at the events typically go to these organizations, we are just trying to figure out where the liability lies. So the example was, um, the popcorn example, and so he just said, um, good afternoon, Lisa, I came forwarded your question to me regarding the liability associated with stated with, um, that's not it. Um, okay, this is a great question, this comes up often, the answer is that it depends on the way that the PTO or booster club is set up, if the district is handling the accounting, directing operations, et cetera, then we would say that the organization is really just an extension of the district. And did cover claims arising out of the operations, if the organization is independent as far as the events, accounting, and operations, and we suggest that they should be insured under their own policy.
So how do they work here? Are they separate?
Well, the policy states that the school support organization shall handle their own accounting and bookkeeping procedures, and maintain their own separate accounts for income and expenditures.
They do all of that.
So they would be separate, so then they need to cover.
You're right.
Yeah.
It did say suggest, not require insurance.
Yeah, it does say, then we would suggest that they should be insured under their own policy.
Okay, but does that mean that if they're not insured under their own policy, they would then be covered under the district's? Because if it's a request, that's, you know, optional, but if it's optional, does that mean that they're flying free with no protection, or?
I think what's hard is that they do their own accounting.
Mm-hmm.
They do all their money, but the event is planned and it's all part of us, so that's where it gets blurred, is we don't touch the money.
Right.
But all the planning and the organization and the running it is PTO stuff as well as, um, building stuff.
Right, but I, I, I want, I want these organizations to thrive, because they're benefiting the district.
Right. Right.
I don't want them to be overburdened, but I also don't want these parents running around not knowing that, you know, your issues are, ugh, sorry you didn't know. That's not fair.
I didn't feel like their answer was concrete.
It's probably one of those things with insurance companies too, where like some of it would depend on, if you submitted a claim, how you phrased it in the claim.
Right, but I
Which doesn't help us.
Yeah, no.
Right.
But I also don't want it to be that whatever it occurs, not, you know, I don't want the district to say, no, you're not covered, and you find out after the fact. Or they're gonna come alongside you and say, let's, let's see how we can help protect you.
Mm-hmm.
Cause, I, I just
I feel like we always take that approach, because we're all doing it together, but, um.
Okay. But are we gonna put that in the policy?
Yeah, I didn't, I mean, I wouldn't like to have a concrete answer, but that's what we got, so.
Well. Then maybe it's for conversation with the board, to say, what, what is the district, where we're gonna go ahead?
Would you like to, anyway, do just that little synopsis, like what the, his response was?
Um.
Do you want me to forward the whole email chain to you? Or do you want me to just speak to it?
Sure, that's, that's fine. Um. Cause I think this should come to the board with that concern of how are we gonna support, how's it gonna look, before we send it out for parent input?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll forward just this email exchange, so that you can have it.
So on that one, then I guess we're good to go, unless there's other, um, cause it was, I mean, it kinda did wipe out stuff.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Which I felt was but do either of you think any of that, that got struck out should go back in? Okay.
I have a side note question.
Yeah.
Do, is it a policy to send out all the policies for community input? Or is that just something that the district chooses?
There isn't a policy for that, it is something that we started doing because we wanted more parent feedback.
Yeah. And the state statute in a couple of places does say that there is, and as more things get passed in the legislature, that we're supposed to be reaching out to the community, and there's a lot of things we do have to have, the board has to have feedback on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, but we don't have a procedure on how the policy, how the policies are handled. Um, and that was something we were talking about earlier, about making it, you know, and it needs to be a little bit more structured with a little bit, you know, the committee itself, i- if it's gonna continue on.
Hmm.
Um, when we first got on the board, nobody touched policies, there was nothing, we had policies that hadn't been touched since the nineties, and um, I mean, that is the number one job of the board, is to create and keep up on the policies, but, um, the district ended up in, uh, some lawsuits, and that's what was drawn to our attention, um, and because the outdated policies existed, it wasn't favorable for the district.
Right.
Um, so that's why we started doing this, um, and looking at it, but yeah, we, it's another thing that needs to be done, but you know, you can only do so much. Yeah, I'm just wondering, cause I've some of the negative feedback where it's like, they're sort of ungrateful for the work that's done anyways. Oh, would you like to read our email? I'm sure I wouldn't, it would just make me wanna fight people for you, but, yeah, but I, I think transparency is great, it's just frustrating, cause I wish people understood more about
It is different advantage sometimes, but it's still a good thing.
why things are upstate. Yeah. Yeah, you'd think transparency would be appreciated by everybody, and instead it's like, why are you wasting your time on this? Yeah, well, it's just a lack of education and understanding, you know, early on, I wanted to create, um, educational meetings for the community, you know, and I tried to structure that, and people at the state and other, you know, told me absolutely not. Cannot do those things.
Yeah.
Because we're not partisan, um, so we've always sort of been told we can't educate the community, but it's just a lack of education, they just don't understand.
Yeah.
What the actual role of a trustee is, you know? Um, of course, when we're on this, we're just being the policy people, we have to still go back to the board, and the board
Right. Right.
gives input, it's just like the one we just did with the, um, the gender, you know, the board said, no, we wanna make sure that the, uh, that, um, legal looks at this, even though it was already written by legal, but okay, that, and they wanted, oh, the per, protocol
Yeah.
before it was adopted, or whatever it was, but the bottom line is, is that really doesn't, that isn't in the board's purview, that, the board can't tell the staff what to do, you know?
Right.
Um.
Well, that's not true, we can tell the superintendent what to do, cause she's our only employee.
Right. Yeah, they don't mind her, they, they don't listen.
She over employs everybody else, so whatever we direct her to do
Right.
is the trickle down thing.
Right.
So.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so, and now already, actually, they're all, they already had drafts for that, so we could've just said, oh yeah, okay, that exists here, they've already looked at that, and
But I'd like you best to know that we did an awesome job on that policy for gender, because legal did look at it, and there was like, not really much to
Yeah.
Well, you could show them what it was, I mean, it was their, they worked on it.
Yeah.
The corrections. Is it, can you pull it up? It's legal compare.
I didn't get it, so.
It's out on the drive.
Well, how could she have gotten it? Is it on the drive?
Yep, it's called legal, um.
Compare.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, maybe we should, is it in that, uh?
I don't know, all I know is, I made a copy of it
Oh, same place? Okay.
so that I could do a legal compare, cause I wanted to see what she was doing.
Oh, sure.
And then I was like, that's it, wow, okey doke.
Oh yeah, I think maybe it was in there, thirty-two eighty-one.
Yeah.
Yep, it's in the thirty-two eighty-one directory.
Uh, it must be in the wrong, yeah, you must be in the wrong one, maybe. There you go, like their legal compare, yep.
Legal compare?
So if you scroll through the red.
Um, I think it was red.
Yep. She added that, um, which I pref- prefer the is not permitted to as to does not, cause that's more concrete.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And then, um, that second statement, I almost feel like it's actually targeting, which, I, I don't know, um. But the district will work with any student who has concerns and needs accommodations with regard to restroom facilities, whether such are gender based or not. I, I don't know why we're calling that out, but it does state it's the district, where above it's the school building. So I don't know if we're just trying to say that, you know, the school building and the district are involved, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the and maybe it was taken from statute, I don't know, but.
I searched that, I can't find it.
You can't find it?
No, I don't know where she got, I don't, I don't know where she got that.
Yeah. Cause I feel that's more targeting than our just ambiguity of, if you just don't wanna use the bathroom, that's fine.
Right.
We'll, we'll give you an accommodation somewhere else, but you can't pick the bathroom because it's the opposite sex.
Yeah. And then she did, yeah, go, this one right here, let's read that again, so. In the event the official record requires identifying a student's gender, the student's gender.
So, um, because we had it as biological sex, I think what, what the point is, is that if there's a gender identifier, instead of biological sex on the birth certificate, we would have to use
Oh, I see, what, okay.
the gender instead of.
It was just confusing, cause it says a student's gender, the student's gender, right after each other.
Oh, okay.
I see, as identified on the birth certificate, yeah, okay. And that was it?
That was it, those were all her comments.
Yeah, and that came from the, um, and she's heavily involved in, in all this stuff, she was the one that gave the spiel when we were down at the ISBA convention, so. I was elated to see that those were the only legal changes.
Yeah.
Good, it's cool.
So we did really well.
Yeah.
We did, actually did sort of know what we were talking about. Despite what others have championed out on social media.
So does this go back to the board again, or is it already done?
Well, it will go back to the board, so that the board can see what legal comments were made.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was passed, they do want, the board does want the protocol, so that has to come from the district office, because we can't tell employees what to do. And then, I, I mean, this is already on the books, so.
Yeah.
Yay.
Yay.
It's done. That big heavy is done.
Yay.
Okay, so, moving on, I don't necessarily wanna jump into use of force and vape detectors yet. I think we should, I know the extracurricular and co-curricular, um, oh, and just so I clarify, cause I don't do that very well. The use of force, vape detectors and metal wands, I think, well, the vape detectors and metal wands won't be going into effect until next school year, so we do have some time.
Yeah.
And I think some of the ones that keep getting pushed away
Mm-hmm.
need to take precedent, because we have to get them done, so that we can move forward. So. I know that, it's like, dang it, that needs to get done. But the extracurricular and co-curricular, I think the issue on that one was the fact that we do have students that are tested, but they don't have a schedule such as an acad- an athletic team, like they don't have practices, and they don't have games that they would be benched from.
They're drug tested.
But yeah, be- because of random, and, and, oh, um, can we pause the recording for a second?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we're back recording after that short break. Um, alright, going on to the extracurricular and co-curricular, participation, participatation, let's see. Okay, so the blue, is that ISBA? It's the thing, so the blue is ISBA, red is New Language. Um, whoa. Is that red?
That was red.
Okay.
And I'm not sure this was from February
Um.
twenty-two.
This is a lot. I thought this would be okay. Well, eight pages won't work for our people, because they don't like them to be really long policies. Um.
I thought we had a more updated version.
I don't know.
So, and is this one that we have not had? Oh, yeah, so ISBA's is eight pages also.
Is it?
Yep. Oh, but this is like procedure and policy mixed together. Um, because they have a hearing process, appeal process, I mean, those aren't.
So policy thirty-three eighty on the
So like three pages.
Roseanna, yeah, and it was last revised in twenty-eight, or twenty eighteen, I feel like we looked at this and we minimized it significantly.
Why did this come to us?
Because there was some concern about students that, okay, yeah, cause we, there's concern about students that, um, are like, uh, like ASB club.
Okay, right, right, right.
Okay, so the ASB president or vice president
Mm-hmm.
uh, pops positive for whatever, well, what is their punishment?
What is ASB?
Associated Student Body.
Exclusion?
Control.
Yeah.
I feel like this draft is just a bunch of stuff merged together.
Yes, this, yeah, this is the, this is the real, this is the real draft.
I feel like we should
I, I got it up here, right here.
So let me go ahead and
Wait, where's that one?
Yeah, this one is currently in the Yeah, this one is currently in the historical version, so this is an old one, when we, I think we first put everything together, the starting board, it's been there when we did it before.
Oh, okay. Oh, so it's not the blue one? Cause I went into the historical version and there's.
I did not know that.
My, oh.
This right here, uh.
Let me go back over there. Really?
Okay, it's on the sheet now.
So, okay, so. I think I have to do the twirling off theme to make it. There's the, okay, twirling off. Okay. Where's the print so small? Is that what made it three pages? Cause we've shortened the print. Sorry, um. Yeah, this layout needs to be fixed, um, there's a class degree. Okay, so violations of rule one through seven or conduct that brings discredit to the participant, the school, or the community could result in temporary or permanent suspension from the activity with subsequent subsequent loss of award. Well. Such determination shall be made by the coach and or administration, a violation of rule eight shall result in ten school day suspension from team competitions, will be allowed to practice and required to compete, complete suspension from team competitions. And required to, yeah, so the athletic, I mean, the the.
Where are you at?
Under discipline.
Okay.
So the whole discipline is targeted to athletics. But yet.
To be changed to.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how we want to.
Would you like me to rework this and reword it and do it through the lens and then bring it back to the policy committee?
That'd probably be great, that way we don't have to spend a significant amount of time trying to, um. And if we could put it back to the.
Yeah, and who's this Tom Wilson Counseling dot com thing that we?
The twelve font instead of the ten point five would be great. Yeah, I don't know, I don't even know if he's still around.
Online classes for court ordered requirements for employment and education, go to Idaho. W C alcohol, drug, minor possession, DUI, parenting. Relax. Oh, here, this is a nice one, thinking errors.
What? Thinking errors?
That's what it says, you can go on here and do your intervention classes when you have thinking errors, eight sixteen and thirty two hours.
Okay. Um. Oh. These are kinda spendy.
Wow, yeah, the one is a hundred and sixty five dollars, so let's see, so what would they give them, what would they send them to, uh, like, um, I mean, there's a marijuana class, but I don't see a, um.
Well, minor possession is cheapest class is a hundred.
Yeah, that would be. Yeah, I mean, but what would our district, shouldn't that be spelled out, what they would be having them take, I mean, what are they gonna fail, they're gonna fail with some kind of drug, right, whether it be nicotine or, um, which is what most of the kids end up with, I guess they could have marijuana, um. Yeah, so then what do they make them take then? And which classes do they take?
I don't know.
What are thinking errors? I don't know that the.
I have thinking errors every day.
Yeah.
They have classroom for you.
What did I, what was I gonna do?
They have cognitive behavioral skills training.
Yeah, I saw that too.
For court ordered, for people that have been court ordered, for that just seems bizarre.
Yeah. I don't know, I just, I mean.
Interesting. Okay, um.
Yeah, I have a hard time understanding and recognizing the district anymore, if it's really about education, or are we running some other kind of institution here?
Okay, so moving on, let's go to the draft twenty five eighty, use of animals in education program. We have a second draft?
Yes.
Why?
Um, cause I think there was originally one version made that didn't, I made a second version, cause it didn't look like the normal version.
So then is there anything different?
No, it's just the way it looks.
Okay, so then we should probably.
Or the format.
The format, yes.
Um, remove the one that we're not gonna be using and then use the one we are gonna be using, keep that in there.
And do you wanna take a look at which one you prefer?
Yeah, the the number two, I think you're right.
Yeah, I mean, making it look correct is perfect, thank you for doing that, but then feel free to go ahead and delete that one, that's irrelevant.
All right.
Do we know which district policy deals with service animals?
Come on, come on.
Duct the gun, look, we updated that one with Chrissy.
We did.
But I don't remember what it was. I mean, I don't remember its number.
ISBA has twenty three seventy five service animals in schools.
Maybe that's it.
Why can't I get there?
Twenty three seventy five?
Mm-hmm.
All right, perfect, so we will. Twenty three seventy five.
Oh, we're having a survey for nutrition services?
Oh.
Just looks so stupid. If you don't like those apostrophes, you could put a may, that they may use, service animals handled in accordance.
Thank you.
I saw where you were going with that.
Excellent, that just looks so stupid. Whether it's right is irrelevant. What kind of regulations?
De-pluralize animals. Having an animals.
In one A. Do we have the form in there, the twenty five eighty M?
Not yet, because we don't even have this policy.
Well, I mean, in the directory.
Oh.
Yeah, we have ISB's. Seriously. Um, question, animal person.
I I was worried that was coming.
Under B.
Yeah.
Um. I- is all of that accurate first?
I have not heard of lymphocytic coriomeningitis, um, and full disclaimer, I did dogs and cats.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Um, but the rest of that looks appropriate, and I could look up lymphocytic coriomeningitis if you'd like.
Well, Dr. Google knows everything, so.
It's a rodent borne viral infectious disease, disease caused by lymphocystic virus, the LCMB, a member of the family Arenia very day, that was initially isolated in nineteen thirty three. The primary host is the common house mouse.
Okay.
Let's all run out and get a hamster.
Or not. The following animals on the form, I gotta read this, the following animals are prohibited in school, and it has a list.
Okay.
Number five, non-human primates.
Human primates though.
Yeah. We're all good, but non-human primates are not allowed here.
Whoa, okay.
Or stray animals. All right. That looks pretty funny. Sorry, page numbers. Yes.
So if a student were bit by an animal, that was a classroom pet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if appropriate, a district accident injury report will be completed.
You have it no matter what, the accident report.
Okay. So it wouldn't be appropriate, it would be a.
Yeah, it's automatic. That could be fall on the ice if anything happens. The accident report is completed.
Apparently hamsters can carry it too. Could watch out for the hamsters.
I know, I've had three hamsters and I didn't know anything. Not me, my kids have three hamsters.
It's like, do you have a hobby?
We just love hamsters.
Would we need to notify a public health official?
Um, I mean, if they end up going to a doctor and then the doctor would do it, so like if there's an accident report and the parent wants to take them to the urgent care, then that would all funnel through that.
So.
So.
They don't have to, but they could.
Okay, but this is saying, um. A district accident injury report will be completed. The school personnel shall notify, so that should be shall not, well, shall notify the student's parent guardian. If appropriate, personnel shall notify public health officials.
For like, we would, or not?
We don't do that.
Right, a doctor would be getting that or something, yeah, perfect. So if, again, if the parent felt like the child needed to go to urgent care, then that doctor would do it if they felt like it needed to be.
Okay. At no time shall any student be exposed to inherently dangerous animal or animal, which.
So no mosquitoes or snails.
You see, what does that mean?
The most dangerous. Actually, I think snails is four or something, but they kill lots of people via liver flukes. I just remember seeing that list of most dangerous animals, I was like, snails. There they were. I think dogs was actually number two. I think mosquitoes were most likely to kill you.
Was dogs from attacks or from giving you zoonotic diseases?
I don't remember.
Interesting.
But mosquitoes were number one?
By far.
Yeah, because they deliver so many diseases.
Yep.
And they carry so many and.
Malaria, looks like malaria.
We've got one, two, four going on that list.
Well, yeah, I know. It's gotta go with all the.
Oh, it stays like that? Oh, okay.
Except for the minor, you know, corrections I made where I just. Took out the is. All right, um. The cages are restraint, okay. Interesting. So now we're probably gonna be holding, okay. All right, so number six, we call it appropriate restraints. A and B, we are now adding. We, we've removed the appropriate restraints and we're calling it, uh, appropriate enclosures. A holding enclosure. All right, so otherwise. I don't like the word restraint, so we'll just.
I just think it's funny that they put enclosed cages. This isn't a zoo. They're less useful otherwise. I like my environment, it's meant to in school. Masters will have access to, or contact with that anyway.
They don't want the rabies. I don't know if it matters to just say enclosure or holding enclosure. So, the kids can't clean the cages. Is that correct?
I don't remember, we don't really have this policy, so.
Right, but I guess.
But it does say we can't have, come in contact with any animal waste.
Right.
So.
Okay, so then what's the, I mean. If they want.
But sometimes it's about being responsible, so I'm sure that sometimes they actually do. So we'll have to either make that decision, are we saying they can or they can't?
Right.
And we could say they have to wear gloves when they do it.
I mean, I don't. I guess, me personally, I don't care one way or the other, but I'm kinda trying to understand, we have a classroom pet. We're trying to teach responsibility, but yet no one can touch the cage or the animal, or why is it even in the classroom?
Right.
So. But, I mean, I'm sure there are parents that would be like, no, my kid is not going near the, uh. Bearded dragon, because that came home one Christmas break, so, like.
And they don't come back often.
Yeah. And we had to buy crickets and all sorts of fun stuff, that I'm like, this is not fun for grandma. Thank you. So I don't know if we maybe wanna just. Yeah. I guess conversations need to be had on this, because I don't.
We just have to decide what we want to do.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we can just sort of come up with a whatever and send it out there to everybody and let them. Have their, yes, the staff and the. I wonder if we should go to the staff first and then do the staff and the parents. I mean, and then do, yeah, everybody together. Just because it will be in the teachers' rooms or whatever.
I mean, I could take this policy and, um, send it to the principals and just say, can you get feedback from your staff? So it's part of a, like, of a, you know, building meeting, they have more of a conversation instead of a survey. And then have them bring back some of that feedback. With that.
I, I mean, I think that's a good idea.
Before we send it out to.
To everybody, you know, being that it does directly affect them and their working environment.
So building principals.
Oh, I have to.
Discuss policy with staffs. I can just have them jot down some feedback from that meeting and all merge it all into one doc and, you know, and we can talk about it.
Okay. Well, they're all kind of wild, but.
No live feed shot.
Not even live crickets?
I had teachers do live beings of mice, snakes in school. Yeah, we did too, we always fed the snakes pinkies.
Yeah.
Yep, especially in, uh, science and biology and, um, we had huge pythons in junior high.
Like, was it a pet?
Uh, at school, yeah, in junior high.
You had huge pythons in junior high? Guess my junior high was not exciting.
Yeah, we, uh, you know, we fed them pinkies. Little baby mice, yep. And bigger things too.
Yes.
I was just gonna say, I didn't know if you wanted to highlight twelve A also. Pinkies, are those like the little mice?
Mm-hmm, not baby mice, it's what they were called, pinkies.
Baby mice.
Cause they don't have any fur, they're just called pinkies.
Oh, no.
It's gotta eat.
Little baby mice.
And then the teacher would feed bigger. Critters to the snake too, and he could just watch. Go through, you know, it'll not, you know, be weak before an egg can, you know.
Yeah.
Yep. I used to catch all that, in the desert where I grew up, we used to have, every, uh, fall, we'd have a huge, um, tarantula migration. I mean, huge, thousands and thousands and thousands of tarantulas.
Where is that?
Yeah, in the, in the desert.
Like in Arizona?
California.
Oh, California, oh my gosh.
Yep, I remember going to my aunt's house and they lived in, uh. Tribuco Canyon. And we were traveling there and it was in the wilderness and there was just this black carpet. Across the road, and it was all tarantulas.
Wow.
It's just like.
That would freak me out.
Like, do you have to run over, because they're gonna get stuck in the car and come up through the vent?
Oh, I'd be out there catching them all. They don't bite or anything.
No, thank you.
Yeah, they're pretty, they're pretty docile.
I used to catch everything.
They're hairy.
Spiders, snakes, everything. Yeah.
Scorpions.
I'm not a spider-bred person at all.
I just have to do so many pages. It is a long one. It is, it's, I think it's a policy and procedure.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I think it's sort of, um.
We're gonna have a dog as a pet in the classroom.
What animal would need to be specially permitted?
A non-human primate. I think like those, some of those exotic animals, like, um. Sugar babies and things like that, I think some of those require special permits.
Sugar babies?
They're like flying.
Flying.
Oh, okay. I was thinking of a flying squirrel, because I had a friend that had one, but. When my kids were in kindergarten, they all got to go over to her house, like, it's a little weird. Whatever. To each his own. Okay, so if there's going to be the rule that the building principal shall be responsible for cataloging any and all animals. Should there be a form for that? Okay. Uh, then the building principal needs to provide the animal catalog to the superintendent. Can't take the animals to. On the bus. Visiting animals, okay.
People like bringing their tuckers.
As long as it's housebroken according to number three.
Animal dissection, do they still dissect? I don't, do they do it in the high school?
Well, I have to ask that question, I don't know. I mean, it's one of the principals. I don't, I don't, I don't wanna speak, I don't think so, but I don't know.
Really?
Maybe.
They don't do any no wood shop, no metal shop, no small engine shop.
I haven't asked that question in a long time.
No dissecting animals, no cooking or.
There's no wood shop or metal shop?
Not at all. I mean, there, there are, there is some equipment there, but I don't think we have teachers for any of that, nope. No, I think some stuff at K Tech, you know, goes on over there, but nothing in just the high schools or junior highs. I'm asking to clarify. I think it'd be great if we still had all that stuff, at least for a rotation of electives, you know.
We had dissect a sheep's eye frog.
Frog, yeah.
I remember doing a frog.
I did a frog.
Did you do the battery with the frog to make it jerk?
No, I had enough time doing it. Like, stop. The eye was a little bit easier to handle than the frog, I don't know why.
We did a cow eye in like third grade or something, and I remember I kept the lens, like, for like years.
You kept it for years? Thought you were gonna say you fed it to your dog when you got home.
No, I just like put it in a bag and kept it, so.
That's kinda cool.
It's really gross, actually. It's very stinky.
Experiments on living animals are prohibited, however.
That's nice.
Behavior studies that do not compare. And animal's health.
Is that extra D E N?
Yeah. Missable. Really? They don't have a curriculum director.
Courtney Lane has two, don't they, elementary and secondary curriculum?
They have one.
Oh, they have one?
Well, I guess I should say the last, Katie Grotman, um, they have a. They have a superintendent, uh, director, um, and then they have, uh, elementary and a secondary director, Hoover.
Oh.
And then they have a curriculum director, and she knows all, all of it, it's Katie Grotman.
Oh, okay. I thought they had a elementary and secondary, but that must be what it is, is their directors, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Everling said we do still dissect, so we're studying biology.
Yeah.
I couldn't remember, my voice hasn't talked about it, so, in a while.
In my speech class, the lady brought a boa constrictor. And, cause we all had to give this speech on. We like had to do a speech where we were training people to do something, so she was going around talking about her boa. She had this boa, I mean, this sucker is huge, wrapped around her. And she would walk, and then she would go back to the wall, because we were in a burnt building. She'd walk out, and then she'd walk back to the wall. And finally, the professor was like, why do you keep walking back to the wall? And she says, well, my body heat is causing the boa to constrict. On me, and it was her pet. Um, but when we get next to the cold wall, my body temperature will cool down, and so he lets go. I'm like, get that sucker off and put it back in the kennel. What are you doing? But yeah, I'm like, oh, no. Let's bring boa constrictors to school. That would be fun.
I like the inherently dangerous animals, can we decide what inherently dangerous is?
Yeah, who determines that?
My animals are higher risk.
Do you know, maybe we can cross-reference on this dogs. The therapy dogs, I know we said this, they had to have certain things proof. We just wanna make sure that this is in alignment with that one.
Can I have a hold of that?
All right.
Do you want me to just copy and paste what we have and then we can compare?
Yeah. Ferrets would be. Ferrets would be kind of fun.
For cats, we might take off the feline leukemia. There'd be a lot of cats that wouldn't have that, it's not contagious to humans, indoor cats don't need that vaccine, there are risks with that vaccine.
Okay.
So.
Okay, I'm trying to find our therapy. Twenty-five eighty-five?
What's a budgie?
A parakeet, kind of parakeet.
It's not a finch?
No. I'm just gonna copy the whole credential. Cut it right here in red.
Oops. I think we just took off bordatella. Oh, I threw you during the year and just put the whole thing in.
Yeah, just put the whole thing in then we can.
Yeah. That would accept. Okay, there we go.
Was that what you wanted?
Yeah. It just, it broke on the page and so I couldn't see it, but that's fine. So can I just step her? Well, I think we should just. Do dogs get vaccinated for hepatitis?
Yeah, it's adenovirus in our other one, I think we wrote adenovirus too.
Okay.
That's hepatitis.
Yeah, Mr. um Evans said they dissect in biology, but then FFA does some too.
Okay. So we can take that paragraph out. I just copied and pasted what it said.
You want me to take what I just put there?
Yeah. Cause in that way, it just is the same. Is there anything that is on here that's not in these ones from the therapy dog? Can you tell? Cause I'm, to me, they're just words.
Oh, no, it looked the same to me.
Okay, okay.
I think we're missing a period after rabies on.
We were great. Okay, so aside from that.
We didn't require dog license, proof of licensing, I don't think, on the therapy dogs, did we?
No.
Um, and that's the only thing I'm not sure about, how would I look at this?
Let me pull it back up. Just as a credential, it does proof of a licensed veterinarian, I mean, medical. The handler wishes planned using the phone, maybe send it. But I don't see where we're requiring.
Proof of licensure.
Mm-hmm.
So you could take off the last M S N one B if you want them to match.
We did say that proof of proposed therapy dog has received the American Kennel Club Canadian Good Citizen.
Oh, oops. Okay, so you'll go ahead and take this to.
Well, I'm gonna send this out to building principals and ask them to have a conversation with their teachers, um. Mostly this will be elementary, but um we'll get most of the feedback there, but uh and then I can just compile it all in a Google doc and bring it to you guys if they feel like there should be any changes.
Okay.
For the gender identity protocol part of things, is that something we're working on or?
Uh, Lisa put it together and the idea would be that um we would bring it to the board and then they would give it, so not through policy, but cause it's a protocol.
Did you look at it or are there things that you feel like could change?
I didn't see anything to change.
Okay. Did you see anything?
No, I thought it was good.
Okay, so that one can be considered gone. I did highlight a few spots that were like. Okay.
Since we have roughly fifteen minutes left, do we wanna kind of do a recap and finish up, or do we wanna move to another one? Um.
I'm good with what everybody else has to do.
I just, since you asked, I had to think of one thing that you might think about for that gender protocol. Is the part about if a teacher notices a change or, you know, something's wrong.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
But not necessarily that the student, like a student request, like the protocol says. It sounded like from some of the feedback we got, I mean, that the teachers were wanting the protocol for that situation too.
No, it's true.
Like if they notice something versus a student.
Right, where it's not a student request, it's not a parent request, but it's.
Okay.
I've noticed something, what do I do?
Observable change.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So you wanna recap or is there one more that you wanna try to put in the fifteen minutes or so?
I can have, I'm checking the form.
Okay, so I'll work on uh policy thirty-three eighty, that's the extrapursular, and just look at what direct classes that link and what classes do we actually have kids take and I'll have our athletic directors look at it and then we're Smith and I bring it back. Um. Uh, I'll have Lisa relook at the gender protocol, I'll add uh Jaclyn's um feedback in there and then make sure she's good with it and we'll take it to the May Board meeting. Um, policy eighty-two forty-five, we'll go to the May Board meeting, um. I will talk to Lisa about the absolute drug and then come up making some alternatives and we can talk about it at the board and then policy twenty-five eighty, I will take it to building principals um and get some ideas from staff since it'll be in their classrooms. Is there anything else?
No. Not that I.
Do you want to end early?
Sure.